Good evening. The July 15, 2015 meeting of the Hampton City School Board will now come to order. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Mr. Harper? Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Samuel?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Mugler?
Here.
Let the record show our school board attorney Nancy Reeves, school board clerk Carolyn Bowers, and school board liaison Thomas Perry are also present. It's now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Joseph Harris, who will lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance in the invocation. Joseph, if you would please stand and come forward to the mic. Joseph is nine years old and is a rising fourth grader at Booker Elementary. He enjoys listening to music, going on bike adventures with his dad, swimming, and even cutting the grass. His biggest joy, however, is playing baseball, and he was recently identified as a standout player during the District Seven All-Star Games, playing for Phoebus Little League. His favorite subject is social studies. He enjoys learning about the past. Joseph has his eye on a major league baseball career, but if that doesn't work out, Joseph would like to build submarines with his dad. Joseph has a sister, Taylor, who also attends Booker Elementary, and she is seven years old and a rising second grader. Joseph, at this time, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, uh, thank you. You may be seated. I have brought for you tonight a poem, "Midsummer's Eve," author unknown. Where are you going, summer breeze, off beyond the fields and trees? What do you see when you blow that way, children jumping from bales of hay? What do you hear as you travel the land, people dancing to an outdoor band? What do you smell as you rush about, the perfume of blossoms bursting out? What do you taste as you slur up high, fresh corn on the cob and apple pie? What do you feel as you climb the great heights, the heat of the day and the warmth of the night? What do you wish for as you leave, let all folks enjoy this Midsummer's Eve?
Thank you very much, Joseph. Joseph, we appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule, your summer schedule, to join us this evening. I know your uncle, Mr. Matt Harris, will be very proud. Your uncle, I don't know if you noticed, he and I played baseball together at Kickitana High School. I know your dad knows that, so please tell him hello for me. I know he's out west. I believe you also have some family and friends here this evening with you. Would you like to introduce them?
My mom, my sister, my dad, and my principal, Mrs. Thomas.
Great. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Joseph, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time again, and we hope you enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you for joining us for this very special evening. It's now my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Wilford Taylor, Jr., who serves as a member of Hampton Circuit Court. He served in General District Court after working as a deputy city attorney for Hampton. Prior to that, Judge Taylor was a partner in the law firm of Scott, Coles, Brown, Taylor, and Melvin PC. Judge Taylor received his law degree from the Marshall With School of Law at the College of William &amp; Mary, his Master of Commerce degree from the University of Richmond, and his undergraduate degree from Hampton University. Judge Taylor currently serves on Judicial Court Council of Virginia, the Chief Justice and Defense Training Initiative, and is the chairman of the Bench Book Committee. He is also an adjunct professor of law for the Trial Advocacy Court at Marshall School of Law. Judge Taylor, please come forward for the swearing-in ceremony of our new superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
The Chief of Staff Chair, members of the board, may I please, the board?
Absolutely.
It's quite an honor to serve, to swear in the new school board superintendent. Dr. Smith, would you come forward, please? Why don't you summon your family?
I'd like to invite my wife, Loriann, daughter Lauren, and son Josh.
Just raise your right hand.
Great.
And repeat after me, please. I?
Aye.
Jeffrey O. Smith?
Jeffrey O. Smith.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Commonwealth, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As superintendent?
As superintendent.
Of the Hampton City Schools?
Hampton City Schools.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, where's he going?
May I begin by saying, Madam Chair, to Judge Taylor, and certainly to those persons who are present, and certainly to the school board, that I look forward to the journey that is ahead, as we work together in very collaborative ways in meeting the needs of the students of Hampton City Schools. And so, thank you for this opportunity, and certainly for the journey that is ahead. Thank you again, and I look forward to working with each of you. So, thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the board to appoint one of its members as chair for the 2015-16 school year. Is there a motion to such?
Yes, I move that Martha Mugler serve as the chairman of the Hampton School Board.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The motion has been carried, and I say to you, congratulations to you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
Is Judge Taylor still here? There he is. That's why I wasn't saying anything. I hadn't been elected yet. Sure you were perplexed. But thank you very much for joining us tonight and for serving us in such a fine fashion and swearing our new superintendent in. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is to elect one of our members vice chair of the board. Is there a motion to nominate?
Madam Chairman, I nominate William Dave Pearson as vice chairman of the board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuel that we elect Mr. William Dave Pearson as the vice chairman of the board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Pearson. Looking forward to another great year. At this time, the board, upon recommendation of the superintendent, shall appoint Carolyn Bowers as the clerk of the board. Is there a motion to uphold the recommendation of the superintendent? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we appoint a clerk of the school board, set the bond of $10,000 in keeping with past practice, and superintendent's recommendation is for Ms. Carolyn Bowers to serve as the clerk. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to serve our board. The school board, on recommendation of the superintendent, shall appoint Diana Gallata, deputy clerk of the school board. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Ms. Henry that we appoint Diana Gallata as deputy clerk and set bond of $10,000 in keeping with past practice. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Gallata. Look forward to working with you in the coming year, in your additional role. The school board shall fix a time, date, and place for holding regular meetings for the ensuing year. There is a proposal attached to your board docs with the proposed meeting dates for the upcoming year. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the date, schedule, and times presented. We, of course, are in the practice of meeting here for the first meeting of each month and subsequent meetings at the Rupert Sargent Building.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we accept the proposed meeting dates for our upcoming year, and that the meetings shall be held at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street, and all others shall be held at Jones Magnet Middle School, and our regular meeting time shall be 6:30 PM. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
The calendar shall move forward as proposed. The school board shall approve a designee of the superintendent to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in the absence of the superintendent. There is a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of Dr. John Caggianno as the superintendent's designee. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve Dr. John Caggianno as the superintendent's designee until the next reorganizational meeting in 2016. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Congratulations, Dr. Caggianno, and thank you for agreeing to serve. The school board shall appoint a student liaison and an alternate. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of Thomas Perry as a student liaison and Sierra Lewis as the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Smith that we appoint Mr. Thomas Perry as a student liaison and Sierra Lewis as the alternate. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Perry and Ms. Lewis. I'm not sure, is Ms. Lewis in the audience tonight, serving as our alternate? She's a student at Phoebus High School. At this time, we'll swear in our student liaisons. Mr. Perry, if you'll join me on the stage? Raise your right hand. Don't look so scared. It's all good. I do solemnly affirm?
I do solemnly affirm?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
And discharge the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As the school board?
As the school board.
Student liaison?
Student liaison.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This concludes the reorganizational component of our meeting. We'll move on to tonight's consent agenda, starting with, excuse me, containing the personnel report, items 5.01, item 5.02, the minutes of the school board meeting of June 3, 2015, the certification of the closed session of June 8, 2015. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented in board docs.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call a vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move now to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Madam Clerk, did we have any forms submitted?
No, ma'am.
We'll move on to other items for action. You'll notice I'm trying to talk quickly because we have a little section waiting for us. We hope to move quickly through our business. We begin with item 7.01, which is the approval of the minutes from school board meeting June 17. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve the minutes of the school board meeting of June 17, 2015. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Abstain.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.02 is the approval of sole source authorization. There is documentation attached to our board docs. Ms. Scott, would you please present a little information on the sole source? It's a tongue twister. Sole source approval.
Yes, this is an annual approval that we seek from the board in order to allow us to make pass judgment on certain procurements that go through the procurement department. A sole source means that a service or an item is only available from a single vendor, and this gives the finance department and myself as deputy superintendent and as the superintendent's designee authorization to approve sole source procurements for both curricular and non-curricular services or products.
Are there any questions for Ms. Scott? Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 7.02.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Smith that we approve the sole source authorization. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Prior to the commencing of this business meeting, members of this board signed a Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for school board members, and so there is an item on our business tonight to adopt the use of the Code of Conduct for VSBA. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Ms. Smith that we approve the VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call our vote? Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.04 is the lease agreement to locate New Cell Tower at Davis Middle School. We had details presented to the board at our prior meeting in June. Are there any questions or concerns at this time? There being none, is there a motion?
Move approval of the lease agreement, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve the lease agreement at, for the New Cell Tower at Davis Middle School. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call our vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.05 delegates authority to the division superintendent to sign business contracts and agreements on behalf of the school board of the city of Hampton. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Smith? Sorry. But we approve the resolution delegating authority to the division superintendent to sign business contracts and agreements on behalf of the school board of the city of Hampton. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call our vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. The remaining items on our action agenda tonight are school board policy revisions. Is there a motion to entertain those and block? I understand Mr. Kilgore wanted to pull one aside for discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve action item 7.06, 07, 09, and 010 as a block, and we pull action item 7.08, construction plan.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve item 7.06, the revision of school board policy DG, custody and dispersment of school funds. Item 7.07, revision of school board policy FB, facilities planning. The revision of item 7.09, revision of school board policy FFA, formerly policy FA, naming of new facilities. And item 7.10, which is the revision of school board policy JC, school attendance zones. Those items were deliberated at our June 17 meeting. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Items 7.06, 7, 9, and 10 are approved. We move to the final item on our action agenda, which is item 7.08. At Mr. Kilgore's request, discussion on the revision of school board policy FEG, which is construction planning. Mr. Kilgore?
Madam Chair, I move that that policy be pulled for further discussion.
And so, would you like to have the discussion now? You want to move it to deliberation?
I think I would prefer to either move it to deliberation at this meeting or move it to our next meeting for deliberation. I don't really, I'm prepared to talk about it now, but that's fine. I can do that.
Can you present a specific motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move approval that we move discussion of the construction planning policy to deliberation for tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we... Do you want to remove it for next time? I'm sorry.
No, for tonight.
For tonight, okay. Been moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Pearson, that we move the action item 7.08 to deliberation. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the item is moved to our deliberation, to which we now move. We have two items under deliberation. We'll add the third item of 7.08. Item 8.01 is the revision of school board policy IGAJ, driver education. Are there any further questions or additional deliberation on this policy revision? The next item is 8.02, revision of school board policy IGAE and IGAF, health and physical education. Are there any additional questions or deliberation from board members regarding this policy revision? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the final item under deliberation, which is item 7.08, which now becomes 8.03, revision of school board policy FEG, construction Mr. Kilgore?
Yes. Madam Chair, we last deliberated this policy in, I believe it was July of 2012. We approved it in August of 2012, where the board agreed that we wanted language in the policy that had board approval prior to submittal of construction plans to the State Department of Education. And so, we modified in 2012 the VSBA recommendation so that this board had approval of the plans before they went to the state. VSBA has come back and tweaked their words, and the verbiage in the policy that had board involvement got struck through. I am recommending that that wording be put back into the policy so that not only does the superintendent review the construction planning before it goes to the state, but also the board looks at that and approves it before it goes to the state.
Are there any questions or comments with regard to Mr. Kilgore's suggestion?
Just where, there's that paragraph just prior to the existing recommendation. Do you want to just pick up that whole paragraph and move it down, or do you want to put it in prior to the superintendent's approval?
I think that would be fine, to put it at the end.
At the end and not the beginning?
Yeah. I don't think it really matters a whole lot, but it probably is better suited at the end of the policy.
Ms. Reeves, can you make that modification?
It will be done.
Okay. Everyone is comfortable with that policy moving forward with the addition of that language?
So, Madam Chair, it's going to be a completely separate paragraph after the full new paragraph of the VSBA language, and so we'll have the big paragraph, and then we'll have the school board of the city of Hampton will approve educational specifications on through.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. So those three items, those three policy revisions will move forward to our action agenda on August 5. That concludes our deliberation items. We'll move on to informational items. And at this time each year, I give notice to the community that Hampton City Schools policies are available to... policies are available to the public online at www.k12.v-a.us. Printed copies of the policies are also available in the School Board Administrative This time, we'll move on to appointments of two committees. PPOC and Procurement, School Board Member Mr. Jason Samuels will represent the Board on that committee. Town and Gown Committee with Hampton University and the City of Hampton, Mr. Jason Samuels will serve as the School Board's representative on that committee as well. New Horizons, Mr. Joe Kilgore will serve the Board on that committee. WHRO, Ms. Monica Smith will represent Hampton City School Board on that committee. Virginia School Board Association Voting Delegate will be Monica Smith, and the Alternate Delegate will be Ms. Phyllis Henry. And I neglected to say, Ms. Phyllis Henry will also serve as the alternate for WHRO in the event that Ms. Smith is unable to attend. Career and Technical Education, Mr. Linwood Butch Harper will serve the School Board on that committee. The Federal Relations Network, Martha Mugler will serve in that capacity for Hampton School The next meeting of this School Board will be held on July 22 at 4:00 PM in the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street, and the purpose of this meeting will be to deliberate and discuss the 2016-2020 Strategic Plan, as well as the new Superintendent's Transition Plan. The next regular meeting of the Hampton School Board will be held on August 5, 2015, at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School, right here. And the next work session of the Hampton School Board will be held on August 19 at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. Dr. Smith, do you have any informational items to share?
I do not, Madam Chair.
He's been here less than 24 hours. Are there informational items from other members of the Board? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just had one thing to share. Last week, I traveled to the Virginia School Board Association to present the two legislative position proposals that we came up with, our School Board, and I've already discussed what they were before. They're the ones dealing with increasing technical support staffing, and SOL opting out calculations. And just want to let you know that the Legislative Committee approved moving those on to the Delegate Assembly for approval. It went well.
Thank you very much for your work on that. Are there other informational items from members of the Board?